Okay, I'd like to call the committee of the whole budget meeting of February 13th, 2019 to order. I'd like to begin by a reading of safety notice. In the event of an emergency, please evacuate council chambers to the nearest exit through the chamber doors and obey all instructions given by the clerk. If assistance is required, please see the clerk. Once you have evacuated the building, please gather in front of the parking lot outside of the town hall. Also, the Town of Lincoln Committee and council meetings are posted on our YouTube channel. I'd like to thank the public for attending tonight's important operational budget meeting. And just want to remind everyone of our rules for engagement. Please be respectful while others are speaking, and please refrain from clapping. Delegations will have five minutes to speak and are asked to stay focused on the agenda item. Please remember to silence all cellular devices. Everyone in council is here except for Council Brunet, who is fighting Pomone, but he's at home, he's taking his medication, and he's resting up. Declaration of Interest, are there any declarations of interest this evening? I see none. Statute of Authority Public Meetings, there's none of those on tonight's agenda. We have no delegations, we have no consent agenda. So, we are now considering item 7.1, Operating Budget Review. Mr. Kerkopolis will be taking us through a presentation on this topic. Michael, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and through you to members of council. As you indicated, I will be going through the presentation this evening. Following that, we will be open to council direction, council inquiries. Each of the members of SMT and various staff are here this evening to potentially answer any questions you may have around drivers. And again, any additional information that isn't captured tonight that you want us to bring back to the subsequent meeting, we will do so. So I will get started. So our agenda for this evening, I will be going through the 2019 operating budget planning, a little bit about our pressures and some of the themes that we've heard. Some of this will be a review and won't come as any new information for members of council. Give you an introduction to department budgets, and then we will go to council inquiries and next steps. So this is the first preview. Tonight's where we start to talk a little bit about numbers. You've had your agenda package in front of you, you've seen a little bit of what we've presented, and we will be in front of you two more times. What we've heard from council regarding what you want to see. We've always talked about that balance between appropriate amount of detail, appropriate topics, areas of focus, the decision-making that went into how we got to where we are at, high-level input, and of course transparency and accountability, trying to share this information as easily or as transparently as possible so that those in our community that look to read it and those that are looking at our information actually can understand what those impacts are. So pressures, we are going to speak to the drivers, as I indicated earlier, and of course you will see within these budgets, and again, various members of the senior management team can speak to aligning to what counselors heard during the election campaign. So how do we begin and start tackling budgets? Budget preparation and administration is a shared responsibility, as you know, between council, your CAO, myself, the finance department, which plays an integral role, and the individual departments and their respective management teams, which oftentimes are the closest to those services. Each play an important role in the financial management of the town. A little bit about roles and responsibilities. As we go through this, budget preparation and administration begins and ends with council approval. At the end of the day, we are here to bring a budget that we feel is appropriate, to share that information, but ultimately to work with council on that desired level of investment. Council has the following responsibilities that are highlighted there, so goals, major performance objectives, your work in terms of guidelines and policy, and monitoring progress towards achievement of objectives, and making sure that we fulfill, and you'll hear about that more in the spring, the independent audits that need to be undertaken that verify the information on a yearly basis that we present. The role that I play for you is that responsibility for the day-to-day operations and administration, and in terms of fiscal management, there are some legislated and mandated things that go along with that. So policy guidelines for council review and approval, a number of these are captured in the bylaw that you approve for the CAO. Ensure that the budget is properly administered, supervise the performance of all contracts, authorize indirect purchases, keep council fully advised on the financial conditions of the municipality, and make necessary financial reports available to council. Similarly, your finance department, the treasurer, Ms. Fanny, her team, they become an extension of the CAO's office for the purposes of the delegated responsibilities of the budget. And you will see there the role that Angela and her team play administering the budget on a day-to-day basis to see that funds are being expended for the purposes approved, and that all claims are supported by proper documentation, administer payroll, and administer purchase order and other financial systems that are responsible to make sure that the organization functions and moves forward. And then of course, oftentimes where the rubber does hit the road within each of our departments, specifically our directors, the divisional managers and supervisors, they play a critical role, as I highlighted earlier. They are responsible for the efficient and effective operation of the various activities and tasks that fall within each of the departments, the day-to-day department and activity budget administration. You see a number of others highlighted there in terms of making sure that accomplishments, objectives, and estimated costs are appropriate, and that they're held accountable and their staff are subsequently held accountable, responsibility for recommending and explaining the needs and opportunities for service changes. So some of that's innovation, some of that is why we need the increases we need, and again, as we get through the presentation today, you will see some of that, and you will see how this all fits together. Strategic budgeting and alignment considerations. So these are things that we're considering, again, when we're putting this budget together, when we're putting the budget before you. The importance of aligning our work plans to our co-created and collective vision, so a place to grow, prosper, and belong. How does every project recommend take into consideration that broad-based goal? Council input. Again, on the previous slide, I highlighted council's role. So council input is important, and so long-term sustainability, things we've heard you speak of. Focusing and investing on the basics, making the necessary investments in key areas. We will be working towards, in the coming months, the 2018 to 22 council priorities, which will guide budget prioritization moving forward, starting with next year's budget. So you've sent all that information, we are looking at it from a thematic and specific way, and we will be working and setting up subsequent meetings with you to ensure that we develop that priority, document that priority plan for you. We've heard loud and clear, and continue to hear it, and it is important to all of us, the value for tax dollar and citizen expectation, so ultimately service delivery. Our folks in our community, businesses that are investing here, that are employing people here, getting good value. We do have a, we are fostering and do have a culture of continuous improvement, looking for innovative things. I will highlight a couple of things we're doing with some of our strategic partnerships on this particular area, but we are and will continue to be outcome-based. What are the outcomes? Council wants to achieve, and how do we get there? How do we give you our best advice? Decision-making should be informed and evidence-based, and then always looking for efficiencies. How do we mitigate budget increases while at the same time ensuring work is completed? And then of course, how do we make some strategic investments that potentially leverage other funding? We are creatures of the province and senior levels of government, so leveraging that funding is important, but where do we put some monies aside to ensure that we get additional So I thought it was important to also share with you the process and lens that we go through when we look at budgeting, and when we look at the asks or the vast array of things when we start this process many months ago that goes into how do we get to an operating budget that we want to present to council? Of course, again, looking at where are expenditures, where are those increases, where are there possibilities to look at other key elements of that? We want to ensure affordability. Effective means for achieving resource allocation that reflects expenditure priorities. So you've heard loud and clear, and a number of the projects and things that you're seeing before you have to do with growth and development. So if you see increased revenues, if you see increased expenditures in particular areas, you know, I look at prudums as an example. It is driving some of our expenditures on the staffing side, within the particular departments and across the organization. We have to look at fees, how do we recoup those costs in the future? And as I shared with you in a number of presentations, there is a little bit of a lag on some of those. So when we talk about effective resource allocation and expenditure priorities, you will see in this budget and probably in subsequent budgets for the next year at least, or two, if not beyond that, and when I talk growth and development, I mean that in the broadest context, but definitely a focus on those particular areas. Of course, the efficient delivery of public services. At the end of the day, that is our bread and butter, that is what we do, that's the currency we deal with. Readiness. And so some of this has to do with the readiness of things that are beyond our control, the readiness of our community, the readiness of the organization in terms of how we bring stuff forward. There's the extent of mandated and legislated services. Of course, there's minimum levels of service and maximum levels of service. I think in various areas, we try to address those minimum and maximum levels. Some of it is historic, some of it is bringing things forward, and community expectations and council expectations. I think about snow clearing, the things that you often will get the calls and the complaints about. There's definitely minimum levels of service. Lincoln has a very good level of service as it relates to snow clearing. Risk, health, and safety criteria. We spent a lot of time on a couple of, or a couple of meetings ago when we were talking about capital and various projects, on the importance of risk, and of course, health and safety remains an area and a criteria. It is but one, but it's definitely an important one. Customer service. So we've heard a lot about responsiveness. Can we get better? Absolutely. But customer service and that customer service view, looking at responsiveness, looking at open-for-business initiatives or whatever they may be, also falls into one of those process and lenses that we look at. Staff analysis and expertise. You employ, we employ collectively a number of professionals, a number of disciplines that are here, their advice, their guidance, their input into various projects, various initiatives is also one of those lenses. And of course, last but not least, definitely the council-identified issues and concerns that we keep a running track of. So overall budget themes. You've seen this slide last time, a little bit about, you know, what we consider uncontrollable versus controllable, and of course, there's definitely, even within the uncontrollable, things that potentially could become controllable, but when you look at there, there are some salaries, wages, and benefit challenges, or stipulations, or criteria that we face. We have a negotiated cost of living increase, collective agreement obligations, of course, a little bit through pay progression, payroll benefit changes that we experience. There are things that often increase and decrease on any given year, although we're, the trend is definitely to see increases along WSIB, CPP, EI, all the things that are really mandatory that we need to pay. Of course, there's inflation, and we talked last, or a few meetings ago, about what are those inflationary pieces, and they range. There's a number of inflationary pieces, whether that be the construction price index, the consumer price index, heat, utilities, where they're coming in, just inflation generally. And you see ranges anywhere from 2% on some of those all the way up to 6%. So often, there's that challenge that we wrestle with, and then you see there, again, some of the other utility and commodity costs that we have. On the controllable and discretionary pieces, where we can have more of an impact in terms of, you know, either increasing or lowering budgets. Levels of service, of course. So what are the programs we are offering? We're in the business of providing new programs. We've expanded our program offering, but of course, we can address levels of service always. There's the external professional advice, and often, because we are a smaller organization, external legal advice is critical for a number of very complex planning applications, consulting. We don't necessarily always have the in-house abilities to do that, because that would become cost prohibitive, so there are those external costs that we entertain. And again, some of those are issues around liability, some of those are issues that sometimes become unforeseen but require us to deal with. Of course, professional development and training, and I think you'll hear, if you do have questions on this particular element, that your entire senior management team believe this is an important investment that needs to be actually increased and continued. But again, you will see throughout this budget incremental will be a word I try to use because this is still very much a basic budget, an incremental budget, trying to address some of particular issues that we're looking to address in some particular base budgets. Of course, the ABCs, we have Janice here from our library. At the next meeting, you'll have representatives from both, or from the library, the BIA, and the TVTA. Those are groups and agencies that, you know, have some funds from the municipality. There's also a number of other organizations, and these included, that also receive various in-kind contributions. It is important that we work across divisions, across institutions, across groups to make sure that we are supporting as best as possible those agencies, boards, and commissions as well. So planning for growth, again, not a slide that should come as any surprise to anyone. We do, we are lean. We have seen increases in our various sections. We continue to work to make sure our fire service is sustainable, our other departments are sustainable. We look to maintain facilities and recreational programs, community events, and those connectivity points, of course, are also important. Human capital and responding to legislative and/or regulatory changes. So we heard at one of the previous meetings, the importance of succession planning and just making sure we are as often as possible, looking at our organization, looking at who's retiring, when are they retiring, and what are the costs of that crossover, of that training? Again, we're seeing hockey seasons and park seasons, so to speak, enjoying, I think, more crossover, and so those are benefits in terms of what we're being able to see. But some of those seasons are lasting longer, and because we are shifting over staff, there's often a challenge with making sure we've got enough staff to both cut the grass if we end up with a warmer spring, but at the same time, keep the ice in longer as well. So all things, again, that we are managing as an organization for council. Of course, just our compensation models, there's been a lot of changes. Some changes have been delayed, but nonetheless, there's been extensive changes that have happened from an ESA perspective. Of course, internally, we deal with compression, we deal with pay equity within the region, and so I've spoken to council over the last number of years, a number of times, about the ability to retain staff, the ability to pay staff appropriately, who our competitors are, the costs sometimes when you lose staff, and what that means in terms of retraining, in terms of delay of projects. So all things, again, that most municipalities are dealing with, and of course, the EDI lens, making sure that we are looking at things from an equity, diversity, and inclusion standpoint. Important, necessary, and I would say essential criteria for us. Of course, just the mandatory regulatory training that it does occur, so AODA and that accessibility in terms of anything we build or construct or rehabilitate, WIMIS, of course, and fire and health and safety. Long-term financial sustainability. Again, I shared with you some of these increasing costs. We shared with you a provincial subsidies chart that really was going in the wrong direction in terms of provincial subsidies, but again, a lot of municipalities, and we're no different, I think, need to learn how to become more self-sustainable and not rely on provincial subsidies, but those subsidies have gone down over the last 10 years from about 1.2 million to about 350,000, give or take. And then again, balancing affordability for residents. You've heard me, I think, highlight that in this presentation two or three times. It is an important element, and we always, I think, in any decision we bring to you, want to make sure that we are doing that. So again, a little bit of a continuation on long-term financial sustainability. Oftentimes, reversing that shift from the residential taxpayer to the industrial commercial taxpayer is essential. It is about sustainability at the end of the day. It's about looking at our available industrial land and attraction, and so some of the works we do and how they fit into that long-term financial sustainability are captured there. And of course, strategic land use, that is both acquisition, like we've done recently, but also getting rid of particular lands when and if we can as well. Again, general resources as another budgetary pressure, prioritization of projects, studies and plans, master plans and strategy completion, and then really moving from there to implementation. And what does that mean from an operational standpoint? The 2019 work plan, the council priority plan, capital projects, and again, just looking at where, how, and where do we best plan for and use our resources to generate the most significant community impact? Because at the end of the day, that's what we want, that's what council wants. So doing business differently. I thought this was an important slide. We hear a lot about continuous quality improvement, efficiencies, and so forth. I've highlighted from a workflow, cost savings, and expenditure standpoint, some of the examples within the organization, and again, if council has questions, we can speak to any of these. So creative services is one, some of our community service contracts and purchasing supplies. So we've done significant reviews within community services in that area. Our AMP's online parking ticketing system, workflow for bylaw complaints, the reduction in staff time on certain tasks. So we've gone from being able to order online business cards, to staff uniforms, to just some general day-to-day things that often happen. We've tried to move some of those forward. Of course, shared services, we're doing more of that. Value for money is a key piece of that. I wanted to highlight, we have some partnerships. We've developed partnerships with Brock, with Vineland Research. We've developed partnerships with Niagara College. I know Chair Pachariva will be happy with this comment, but sometimes we hear about, are we being innovative? Are we looking at things like self-watering planters? Are we looking at things like living snow fences and those sorts of things? Some of these partnerships are the ones that you're going to hear about, hopefully next week and moving forward, really focuses around some work with Vineland Research, ourselves, and Brock, and looking at green infrastructure. And so some of the key things on that list, I'm assured, will be some of those things, Chair Pachariva, that you've mentioned in the past, as well as other things. I know you've mentioned it when they've all been here, delegating, and so I think that innovative piece, we often hear, you know, are we being innovative? Are we looking at, you know, key elements and preparing for the future? I want to assure council that we are. These partnerships, while they cost us very little, allow us to save on the consulting side in the long run, and actually have work done by very skilled professionals, and at the same time, give our, those professionals and those students real-life, real experiences. So we consistently and continue to look at customer service. We look at ongoing identification of additional funding opportunities. Bless you, Mary Easton. And partnerships. Again, I've shared some of those. We've been incredibly successful on the grant side. It's allowed us to do some, you know, important things. I'm told probably next week or the week after, you'll hear about another one around climate change, so rest assured, we continue to pound the pavement as it relates to grants. I mentioned previously our partnerships with post-secondary institutions. And of course, just generally accountability, innovation, and, you know, the understanding that ensuring there's a clear connection between the budget, the strategic plan, and what council wants to see there. We will and continue to engage with council, and we'll do that following the wrap-up of this budget as we prepare for 2020. So departmental budgets. Budget drivers, and I'll go through each of them, and then if you have questions for the departments, we will answer those. So budget drivers, as it relates specifically to council, you'll see we've actually tried to right-size some budgets, addressing actual costs, so whether that be mailouts, whether that be other things that I think often, you know, we don't always completely capture. So every year, we go back, we look at what was spent, and so that is one of them. And of course, we've looked at where can we accommodate what we believe will be some of the council priorities development and rollout. You'll see here on each of the pages, we show you the 2018 budget approved, the restated, and then the 2019 budget proposed, as well as what is that dollar amount change. I will remind counselors, 150,000 is 1%. Keep that in mind when you look at just the various increases in terms of what you're seeing here. The CAO's office, so this includes economic development, it includes communications and public affairs. You'll see as we move to the next slide, it includes some monies for tourism and what will be some tourism efforts, currently government relations, strategic planning, and human resources. So what is driving that? For the most part, that increase is being driven by salaries and wages, and I think it's important to highlight, we added two new business areas in 2017, economic development and communications, but we added the FTEs. What we didn't add is the budgets that go along with those in order to do some of the work that's required to do. So we, every year, have tried to very incrementally increase those operating budgets, and this year specifically, we've also added a, albeit small, an incremental CIP contribution. Again, I've always said I think it is important that we continue to put money in the bank for the future, and you'll see that theme on some of the other departments. So again, looking at the increase, you're seeing an increase here of approximately 241,000 to capture, again, economic development, tourism, communications, government relations, strategic planning, and HR. Legislative services, some of the drivers, there is citizen advisory and committee oversight. There's a level of enhanced service to council that I think we're seeing in this area, and council's made that investment in years past. And we are looking at a review of services. So you're going to see increased revenues, and that's really on things like marriage licenses and death certificates. So overall here, you're actually seeing a decrease of $5,000 in this budget from a legislative services and clerk standpoint. Part of that, again, is some of those offsetting revenues, and some of that is just the change from legislative services to finance and some of the roles and responsibilities and the associated budgets that go with them. So I think of, again, streamlining as an organization, how we look at legal services, how we look at insurance, how we look at some of those other risk elements, putting them in the right budget lines so that they're actually captured appropriately. From a finance and administration perspective, some of the key drivers I've highlighted here, we are looking at, so we hired a procurement position late last year. We had budgeted really for only a quarter of last year, when that was approved late last year, in terms of the 2018 budget. So now we are feeling the full effects of a year of a procurement position, and that's what we're budgeting for. We are looking at an IT governance review in terms of what IT looks like, how it looks like, how it functions, how it serves the community and the organization. Cyber security and safety, again, things that are relevant are important right now. And of course, just looking at our agenda, meeting and record management system, moving from the current system to an eScribe system. So again, looking at those increases, you're seeing an increase in that budget of approximately So this is another general line, it's called general government taxation. You often see it in your package. This is the line item in the budget that we have to present separately from finance and admin, but it does fall under finance and admin, and this is where we capture things like funding, the decreasing revenue offsets, potentially tax arrears and so forth. So you will see an increase in this particular area, the majority of that increase being driven, again, on that revenue side and less money coming in. So there is a cost to that. We've talked about OMPF. We've talked about in years past, we've been successful, or we've wrote allowances with something that we were looking at in years past. We are not looking at that right now. There is a pause on that particular element. There's a number of grants that we're, that we're looking at that may be decreasing, and again, some success on the fine penalties and interest side of life. We've been able to recoup most of our tax arrears. That means year over year, the amount we anticipate from an interest standpoint decreases. Lincoln Fire Rescue. So again, what's driving a little bit of the increases here, a little bit of it is on salaries and wages, and we can speak a little more specifically to the phased approach that we are looking at there in terms of our firefighters and the review of compensation as it relates to fire. Some small increases in training Some small increases in training hours and mandatory training due to change in regulations. And of course, there is a small increase as it relates to that shared services, emergency management coordinator role that we are sharing with Wes Lincoln, Grimsby and ourselves. So overall, you're seeing an increase from a fire budget perspective in the amount of $183,000. Public Works. One of the things in meeting with members of council that Director Safani and I heard loud and clear, continued investment in active transportation and road safety. And in some areas, increasing that where we could. So speed reduction, traffic calming, crosswalks, et cetera. You will see that captured in there. The Transit Coordinator. While we have received 75% funding for that, that is something that we are absorbing as we move into 2019. Again, here's where I mentioned earlier, leveraging other levels of government, other dollars, but there still is an impact to the municipality. Climate adaptation, training and quality assurance, just the cost of materials goes up. And of course, again, some of those minor salary and wage increases that we spoke about. So you're seeing an increase in Public Works of 320,000. And I think, you know, when I share those numbers and you look at them individually, you're probably doing your own calculations. You're thinking, okay, that's a percent, that's 2%. But when you look at, you know, the net budget for Public Works, a $4.4 or $5 million. And then you see this increase, I think it's important just to look at the context of it and to look at where we're making those investments. Community Services. Council invested in community services over the last numbers of years. As a result of that, I think you're going to look at and you're going to see community services coming in at a very appropriate and actually you'll notice, and I'll move to that slide before coming back, you'll see a decrease of $82,956. The reason for that is definitely on the increased revenue side. So user fees, making sure that we can actually recoup as much money as possible. This is a good news story for me in terms of the department. Council made some investments in years past and I think now you're seeing a lot of those investments pay off. So there are increases in certain areas, but overall a decrease. So operational materials review has resulted again in some of those decreases. How we procure things, how we're spending money, where we need materials and maximizing that. We're also seeing some increased revenues on the cemetery operations side. So again, as I said, a net budget decrease here of $82,000. And I do highlight a significant increase specifically on the fees and service charges side of the ledger. Planning and development, we are responding to projected growth. We have an unprecedented amount of planning and building application permits. But with that also comes unprecedented planning and building user fees. And so again, you're seeing a budget decrease here, ever so small of about $3,000. The biggest driver there is those user fees and service charges is to the tune of about $400,000 increased fees that we're going to be getting this year. So here's the overall slide as we kind of wrap up the numbers. This looks at overall as an organization where we're at. You see the number at the bottom, a net levy increase this year that we are seeking of $1.49 million. So a little bit of a summary here. I think in a lot of ways, I'll bring your attention to, you know, you ask me, I think, every year to characterize what this budget looks like or what type of budget it is. This one is once again, I would suggest, status quo from a service delivery perspective in many areas, those incremental increases in each area to ensure that we continue to meet your desire, your service level and the community service level needs and wants. It is continuing to catch up in a number of service areas. So you heard me talk in the past about appropriate costing and budgeting. Making sure when we budget for projects or budget for certain things that we incorporate the right fees and not just the construction budget, but all those other additional costs. It is addressing some one-time elements. So this slide here, I think, tries to break down for council where we think currently things stand at as it looks. There are some things here that I will take you through. So tentative budget commitments. Again, some of these can change potentially, but I think it is important to start having this conversation with you in terms of what we can expect. The special infrastructure levy at 1.5% is what we are expecting. We've heard from council. Now, we've heard the potential to increase that. But overall, for the purposes of the calculation I've got here in front of you, we have that at 1.5. We have a modest increase in our ABCs of 0.2%. The capital budget levy impact, so the part impacting the levy is a 0.3% increase or about $51,000 from last year totaling about 2%. So those are the things that I look at that either council has approved or tentatively approved or likely impacts where we're at. So then I move over to where departments currently are at. And I emphasize currently because I'm likely to receive council direction to potentially go back. So that leaves departments at about 7.8%. Again, I think it's important to highlight, that is on our one-third. So sometimes 7.8% is slightly misleading. You know, I would multiply that by a third and give you in big red lines a third, but finance tells me that's probably not the appropriate way to do accounting per se. But I think it is important to highlight that in that comes salaries and wages, utilities, supplies, reserve contributions and those sorts of things. Again, you hear me highlight both the special infrastructure levy and reserve contributions. Putting money in the bank is a good thing. Yes, we levy for it. Yes, municipalities generally levy for it. Can we do that to the same level every year? Maybe, maybe not. That is a discussion and a conversation we will have with council. It is good financial practice. Your finance staff will tell you it's good financial practice. I will tell you that the level at which we put in our reserves can be something that we have a broader conversation on. I think though, it's important to highlight of that 7.8, there are things that, you know, we deem uncontrollable. So those inflationary costs, just the cost of purchasing things, really things beyond our control in a lot of ways. We can purchase less of them, but if we purchase and assume status quo, we're looking at about 3.3% there. Our collective agreement benefits and so forth are about 1.5%, giving us a total of about 4.8. I think it's important to highlight those pieces because when you subtract those two, that really leaves departments coming in at 3%. That's the part that we have significant control over as an organization. I'm often asked about Niagara region, where's Niagara region at? Because at the end of the day, when people look at their tax bill, they're looking at the bottom. They're not looking at how it's apportioned and education and those pieces. And some people will read those things. It is important to be transparent, but a number of you have probably read the article. Niagara region is looking at a 5.8% tax increases, fairly unprecedented for Niagara, playing catch-up, making the necessary investments. We've assumed an approximate 5 to 5.8% increase for the region. And so I know oftentimes what we present, what would that blended rate look like? What's the overall rate should that happen? And as a result of, I think, the region being that driver, our tax is likely will come in in that 5.8% range should the region stay where it's currently at. Now, I can't speak for Mayor Easton, Council Foster and the rest of regional council. That may decrease slightly, but based on what I'm reading and just hearing, I think even on the staffing side, that is likely to be in the range that the region will be in, which makes our potential blended rate, again, somewhere in the 5 to 5.5% range. So next steps, as I said, will be in front of you again February 20th. We'll respond back to anything council may want as it relates to this evening. And as Chair Paciriva guides us through that conversation, ABCs will be here that night as well. And so we are now open to council inquiries, any additional information requests. And as I said, members of senior management team are here to answer any potential drivers or things that we can and anything we can't, we will bring back to you at the next meeting. Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Mike. I mean, the numbers are the numbers. So I think what we'll do is we'll go through department by department and, you know, ask council and committee if they have any questions and we'll go through it and address it that way tonight. So we'll start with the office of the CAO. And if any, anyone has questions?
So, Mr. Chairman, if I could make a comment. I know, you know, in the past previous meetings, you've asked me about certain things that may or may not be in particular budgets. So I think of things around specifically tourism and a tourism strategy or economic development. Those are things that, once those strategies are fully completed, we may find ourselves and likely will find ourselves giving you an update and potentially looking at, from a mid-year perspective, what sort of additions or increases or changes, I think, better is a better way to characterize it, we may need in those particular areas. So it's not that we are omitting it and have forgotten about it, but I think it's just important to highlight, those may be things that we address when those strategies are done and the recommendations come out of those strategies.
And I think another thing too, Mike, if we can look at, you know, that last slide, the budget breakdown proposed for 2019. You know, in the one slide, we're talking about effective means of achieving resource allocation that reflect expenditure priorities. Part of this year's budget is looking and tackling future items, specifically prudums. So there's probably a cost in this budget that we can, you know, kind of box out and add to the breakdown of the effective prudums. Like thinking to, it's that spending upfront dollars for return that will come in the form of taxation at a later date. So wondering if that's...
Sure. I mean, through you, Mr. Chairman, I think specifically to the point around prudums. And that's definitely a good suggestion in terms of maybe even parsing that out. If you look at, again, just the, and then I'll highlight contractual, but the contractual FTE requirements for that that we have shared with council and that we have moved forward with and likely hope to move forward with, again, you're looking at about 1.5 to almost 2% just for prudums. So I think you're right, parsing that out. And that takes the rest, the departments as a whole, when you remove those closer to 1% in terms of things. So again, I think it's a good point to highlight. Prudums is a driver. It's an important driver. We have one chance to get it right. But there are costs as there are with any key strategic special projects that we either take on or you have us take on in the future as well.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Russell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Actually, I'm just going to jump ahead real quick, but I'm going to come back to the CAO office. I know it's not the way you want to do it, but it's just for a point of clarification. The potential blended rate of 5.8%. Is that with, and again, it's just be my first time through this, is that including the region? Because, but if the region is, again, coming in at 5.8, that means we're basically even...
So again, I think, you know, when you look at, when you do the math, Counselor, they equate for a little over half of the budget. And so if you were looking at how it's weighted, their weight is significantly higher than ours, but weighting that 5.8% that the region comes in at with us coming in at wherever we land, and again, we're just doing the calculation based on where we're currently at, would still give us an overall blended rate of that because we don't account for the entire portion of the budget.
Okay, and school board, that's not factored in yet?
So the school board is factored in. We've assumed zero on the school board. Again, that can change. In previous years, there's been a slight decrease. In the last number of years, it's been, and Director Safani can chime in here exactly where the school board's been, but right now we're assuming 0% for the school board.
And then going back to the office of the CAO budget, page 25 for the clerk. Just a clarification for me from the 2018 budget where salaries, wages were 683 up to 801. Was that because of the addition of the two FTEs or just trying to factor why that went up so much? And then is that possible? It could be a factor there as well?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. That's correct, Counselor. I think, you know, overall, we had, we had looked at the 2018 budget, hired those positions late in 2017. And some of that was similarly looking at those additions. Some of it is, again, salaries and wages and where people are paid, where they come in at versus where they move to when we review positions moving forward. But those increases in that particular area really is the addition and necessary increases on that.
And when the budget went through the first time, they just weren't conceptualized at that point? When the approval process was going through?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I see Director Safani nodding. One of the things that, you know, we've shared that would be a place I'd love to get to is when we approve FTEs, we actually in that given year approve the full amount. But sometimes because of budgetary constraints, we're only approving a quarter. You know, we did that on procurement, for example. We only budget for a quarter. So then this year, we're already accommodating 75% additional increase because we've only budgeted for a quarter. I think sometimes when you are lean, when you are small, like we are, and I use, cautiously use the word small, when you're lean the way we are, sometimes you have to budget that way. I'd like to get to a point where when we give you an FT, regardless of whether we hire it in April or we hire it in October, you know the full cost and that's the full cost in that given year.
And I think, and Mike, thank you very much for that because I think that that was that conundrum that we were faced with is that, you know, we were looking at in the past of bringing the FTEs on and knowing that, you know, the budget that we had was razor sharp. So we went back to Mike and we said, okay, how can you bring this forward, you know, still with the targeted rate? But unfortunately now, this is kind of coming home to roost. So again, let's look at changing those principles going forward so we know the full impact rather than, you know, having more of an up and down cycle. Counselor McLaughlin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to our CAO, just curious, with regards to this budget and the staffing, I see the word tourism there. Now, is that a duplication of service? We currently fund the 20 Valley Tourism Association as well. Are we going to be kind of doing the same thing that they're doing as well?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I think we've looked at where do we need to start supplementing where possible our own budget to enhance some of that tourism and marketing piece that goes along with it. I think that's absolutely a good question. Part of our strategy that we come back with mid-year, we'll likely look at, should we be in the business of tourism? And if so, what does that look like? And what's the necessary investment to do so? I think we've highlighted tourism there as a potential new function because we are spending time supporting it. I can tell you, I think the budgetary increase for tourism that we're looking at is a very small amount. I am looking at either Mr. Deany or Director Safani to chime in, but I don't think it's more than 10 or, I don't know, someone can chime in.
Through you, Chair. Correct. In terms of the tourism strategy itself?
Thank you, Chair. Through you. In terms of the tourism ask itself, we're asking for money to do the tourism strategy. In addition, we're asking for some small dollars in terms of tourism marketing, of which we already do some of that marketing in itself in terms of the Todd signage on the highway. So that's where the increase is.
Okay, thank you. It's just not, it's not really clear. It's pretty vague in this, these set of numbers.
And those are definitely, through you, Mr. Chairman, I think, you know, that's, those are definitely things that we can expand on further should council direct that you want us to break down some of those.
Fair enough.
Okay. So the next, oh, Counselor McPherson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I'm not going to go department by department. I'd like to go to the overall, if you can, Mike. Through you, Mr. Chair. And, you know, when I go through these things, I try to look at where are the big numbers? And, you know, the $5,000 and $10,000 adds don't, you know, really add up, but the big numbers add up. And when I look at this summary, you know, obviously the first thing that jumps out is the $1.1 million in salaries, wages and benefits, which is about an 11% increase year over year. And we know that some of the salaries are, and I don't know what portion of it is, is covered in the 1.5%. So that leaves a fairly large number that's in the, what you call pay by grid, I guess, and, I guess, other types of salaries. So I think an ask would be, how do we split that? How does that, when looking at $1.1 million in salary increases, that makes up almost two-thirds of the 1.49. 2/3 of the 1.49, you know, it's a big, big number. And not to say that we don't deserve salary increases, that's not what, but, but just to get our heads around, how do you get to 11% year over year? You know, there's got to be some fairly significant increases or FTEs, I don't, you know, we don't know, we don't, we can't see in this summary or in each one of the departments what makes up that number. So, for, you know, next week or whatever, could we see how that looks?
And so, I think we've started some of that work, I think anticipating, Counselor, that very question. When I look at this, through you, Mr. Chair, when I look at this chart, that is the number that we also focus on, you know, I think what we're also gonna do, I mean, a lot of those are being offset by revenue, so I think, you know, whether that be the 75 cent dollars for U-Link, whether it be the other positions, there are things that we will share with you that look at that. We will also anticipate how much of that is the cost of living adjustment and wage progressions. Of course, there are positions, and I think about procurement, I think about others that were those mid-year additions, and again, we will come back, and I think we can break down those in a more clear way for members of council, and try to bundle it for you so you know what that looks like. So, duly noted.
And if I may, Mr. Chair, so, in tying the number on the bottom of that, back to your budget breakdown proposed, how does 1.49 million, which is roughly 10%, how does that show up on this slide?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, yeah, definitely something we can bring back and I think, start laying out percentages. You recall in the past, we have done that, when we look at cost of living, you know, those new pre-approved FTEs or commitments that you've made. So, in past years, I think when we get to that stage, we have broken it down that way, so I think what we'll do is come back and make sure that we're showing you that as well.
I'm not asking about salaries and wages, I'm asking overall picture, one and a half million dollars in levy, and we're showing up here that we would be at, I'm not quite sure, we'd be at...
Right now, as an organization, we're probably sitting at a little over 9 and 1/2% currently, right now.
So, that doesn't necessarily show us that there?
Sorry, the 2 plus the 7.8, probably take you to 9.8%.
Okay, so that's where that is? So, that's the number that we're sitting at today?
Yep. That's currently where we're at right now, yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. Counselor McLaughlin?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Further to that point, with regards to that question, with his, with that number you're quoting 10%, we have transfers here of just about 500, a little more than 500,000 in the big picture there. To come up with that levy, final levy total, is that, and that's greater, that's 500,000 more than, where do those monies come from?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I will ask Director Sefany to speak to that particular item.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chairman. The transfers can either be, our capital levy is in there, the reserve transfers are in there, and then transfers to water and wastewater reserves between the funded other source revenues, the transfers are in there. What we can do for next week is we can provide a more detailed breakdown of that, so you can see what makes up the number, because there's a lot of in and outs in that line.
Yeah, just reason why I'm asking, that's a huge jump from 2018, that's 30, almost 33, 34%. Thank you.
Okay. So, continue through. Legislated Services Budget. Any questions here? Okay. Okay. Sorry, Counselor McLaughlin?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I was looking up, not down.
It's okay. Regarding Legislative Services Budget, it's considerably down this year. Last year, we had an election that cost the town $150,000. How do we address that? Do we set money aside yearly towards the future election?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, we do, we set aside approximately $50,000 each year for the four years to cover that. So, again, when you talk about transfers under the transfer line here, that's there.
Okay, thank you, just clearing myself on that.
Okay. Finance and Administration. Okay, Lincoln Fire Rescue. And again, through this, Mr. Krikopoulos, maybe to the chief, to break down that salary, wages and benefits, new recruits as opposed to where we're at on the grid progression, right, is probably a good idea? Because I know you hired a number of them just to keep pace with where we're at, and if there is any number in there with respect to the on-call service that we did last summer, might be a good idea? Okay. Public Works. Counselor McLaughlin?
Thank you very much, Chair. Through you to Public Works, just regarding revenue and the U-Link bus system, my understanding is that we were going to start charging fees for use of the U-Link starting January. How is that moving along?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, so what we're planning for at the moment, in terms of establishing a ridership fee, we're working on a launch date of April 1st. What we've been doing is we've hired our new transit coordinator to help us get behind developing a lot of these policies and where we need to go with transit, so we're gonna be, you know, marketing, communicating in March with the fee being collected in April.
Okay, so, that pilot program is no longer a pilot program, this is an actual program that we have, and we're gauging ridership continually at a free ridership procedure, correct?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, yes, right currently we are, yep.
So, moving forward, when we determine the realistic ridership, when people have to start paying, when can we expect those numbers? That would give us a true idea of what ridership could look like down the road?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, so what we'll be doing, we'll be reporting to council quarterly on our U-Link transit program, so as soon as we start, you know, once we have the fee implemented, the user fee, we'll be trending what that looks like in terms of ridership and reporting back to council on that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Community Services. Okay, Planning and Development Budget. Which brings us to the overall. So, are there any other questions from committee that you want staff to go and take a look at and bring back for next meeting? Mayor Easton?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask, through you, to Mr. Krikopoulos, I don't know that we've ever talked about sinking funds, and I was curious to know whether we actually are using them to offset our debt, our payment of debt. Is this something that we need to know about, or how are we handling the sustainability of those payments?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, so just for my clarification, Mayor Easton, when you refer to sinking funds...
I'm talking about, where are my notes? I'm talking about those situations where we are retiring a debt and we're using cash or bonds or preferred stocks, and I'm asking about this only because of the special presentation that we had last year with CIBC Woodgundy. I thought about it then and forgot about it, but wondered if we use any of those investments that we have as a mechanism for paying down debt or retiring debt.
So, through you, Mr. Chairman, I will let Ms. Sefany answer that specifically as it relates to those.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I believe the mayor is speaking about, like, our reserve funds and investing those reserve funds, and what purpose are we using the income for? Reserve fund interest is specifically identified to be put back into that specific reserve, so if it's for wastewater or water reserves, then those interest dollars go back into that fund. If it's an operating surplus that we have and we have those funds invested, then that interest is just allocated to our operating budget and is an income line in our budget.
Okay, and so, Mr. Chairman, through you, if we have a long-term debt and we have a large sum in a reserve fund that is not going to be used, say, for the next 10 years, would we use that as a, would we use that to retire a debt or a portion of a debt?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I mean, again, Ms. Sefany can add anything that I may have missed, those are some of the questions that we are asking our auditor specifically. There are reserve funds that have very clear criteria for what they can and cannot be used from, for. There are a few that we have, typically, our rate stabilization reserves that we like to keep. There are others that we can potentially use, council does have a reserve as it relates specifically to the hydro dividend. You also have another reserve as it relates to West Lincoln Memorial Hospital, for example. Those are more general in nature, although they have specific uses, and, you know, I think theoretically, could they be used for something else? Yes, but as it relates to both the operating and capital rate stabilization reserves, I think it's probably one of those things that we exercise caution with not to use massive amounts of those, because we do want to anticipate and save for that rainy day. So, there are some, and I think we will be coming to you mid-year specifically in terms of a report on CIPs and the hydro dividend. I'm tying those two together, but that may not be the case based on council direction, so we will be coming forward on the hydro dividend with potential options on how council wants to use that strategically. One of them could be, I think, to your question, Mayor Easton, using it for things like that.
Okay, well, I just want to make sure, you know, I think, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Krikopoulos was wise to point out our position on reserves, but we also don't want to put money in reserves if the plan is to use it, you know, maybe a corporation our size isn't using sinking funds, I'm used to this at the region. So, we're not putting money in reserve accounts so that we can actually use that money against, you know, a longer-term debt, and so, you know, we're not collecting levy to put it away, to just put it away to collect or to make sure that debt is going to be paid off. I think that's fine, I'll wait until you bring further data. I think it makes the reporting of debt carrying charges unrealistic. Thanks very much, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, can you hit your button, your worship, please? Thank you. Counselor McLaughlin?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you to Mr. Krikopoulos, just, when I first received this budget, why this year did it exclude water and wastewater?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, those are on the rate budget, and so they're often presented separately. So, we'll be coming, I looked at the clerk, I think we're coming on February 20th with that particular budget.
Okay, the reason why I asked is, I was trying to compare this current year, 2019, to 2017, and I had a difficult time. 2017's budget had water and wastewater included in the overall budget, and this one did not, so that's...
So, I think Director Sefany has something to add to that.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, what our past practice has been and is continuing this year is that we present the levy budget first, and then when we do the, then we present the water budget at the second meeting, and then we'll bring it all together as one complete package, so the one you're looking at online or the final from last year is one complete package, but it was presented in two stages.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor McPherson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, so, it looks like, appears as though we're getting to the end of our questions, and so, my question, maybe of you, Mr. Chair, is, so, what are we, what are we doing from a direction standpoint? Is this, is this, you know, all we have to send Mr. CAO away with, and, you know, he's only going to, you know, give us some more information, you know, about wages and things, and that's kind of it, and we're gonna sit with 9-9, or what's the plan?
Well, and I think, I think from chatting earlier, I mean, it's taking, knowing now what the number is, taking a look at both, the operating and the capital, to see if we can make any changes, if there's anything that can come out of this to maybe reduce that number.
So, do we have, and I understand that, you know, not all are in agreement on setting a target, and I don't want to necessarily do that, but, you know, 9-9, you know, we're gonna struggle with 9-9. So, how do we help Mike get to that number that, you know, we will want to sign off on? Is that tonight? Is that next week? You know, what is, what are we doing?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, tonight would be ideal to give us some of that direction to go away with, because I think, you know, we want to have a budget in front of you, we want to start procuring some of our capital works, we want to start getting on with it, and I think the longer it potentially takes. So, typically, what we do at this point, of course, we're gonna go back, we're gonna continue to look at anything, has anything changed, any of our projections potentially changed, but some guidance, I think, is important. We will definitely be coming back with the questions council had. One of the things I want to say, if the chair will indulge me, as it relates specifically to wages, because I did overhear, or I happened to overhear a little of a conversation over here with members of council, and that is that the levy impact is actually not $1.1 million, it's actually probably closer to $700,000. We're trying to present all of these and then keep revenues on a separate line to show you, here's what the increase is, but there's about 500 or so thousand dollars in potential offsets from revenues that we're receiving. So, we will lay that out in a separate slide, but I didn't want council to leave here tonight thinking that it's simply that number and there aren't potential offsets on those. But, that being said, I think direction tonight of some sort, in terms of what council wants us to look at would be incredibly helpful.
Counselor McPherson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I struggle, through you to Mike, I struggle with that whole reserve piece and the fact that, you know, whether it's levied now for the future or which would be reserve, you're still drawing it out of a levy at some point, it's just, it happens to be our bank account, and we need to replenish that. So, it's more, okay, what is, you know, the number's the number, you know, you can't, you can't say it's not, it's the number. Somehow, we have to pay for that, and somehow, that's either, that's coming from the levy at some point. So, you know, to say that it's only 700 grand, that other 400 grand is coming from somewhere, and it's probably coming from our bank account, which we then need to go back and resupply with the levy. Is that not the case?
So, through you, Mr. Chairman, I think specifically, if you talk about things like equipment, vehicles and those sorts of reserves that we often put money in to the future to look at, can we decrease potentially some of those investments? Yes, can we then look at, when we go forward in future years, paying as you go? Absolutely, to your point, we can put money in the bank now and levy for it, or we can levy for it in that particular given year. year. It is still one of those things that we will need to levy for at some particular point in time. So absolutely, Counselor, I completely get what you're saying. Mike, I think my point specifically as it related to salaries and wages is some of the offsets are not coming from reserves. They're actually coming from senior levels of government or where we're receiving other funding. And so I think about, that's what's not captured in there, the 75% dollars that we're getting from the province for U-Link, all those other things that find themselves in that particular. But, but definitely, we will be presenting that, that back to you. But definitely guidance, again, of some sort would be helpful.
Go ahead.
Okay. Well, and I guess, you know, okay, okay, we've got, okay, I don't have to do this yet then.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Counselor McLough.
Just, so let me, let me be clear that 5.8% is what the ask is, and inflation currently for the average taxpayer is 2.2 or so. So we're asking the taxpayer to pay 2.7 or, yeah, on top of over and above inflation. Is that correct, Mr. Krikopoulos?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I mean, I think the simple answer to that question is yes, Counselor. Notwithstanding wherever the town comes in at, because the region is coming in as high as it is, there is no way that, you know, there really isn't anything that the town could do to lower that to the level where you're, I think, describing. Could we come in lower potentially? For sure. Now, could we do it to a point where we would knock off the overall blended rate, close to 3%? I don't, that is impossible if the region stays where it's currently at.
Thank you. Through you, I, I'm not, the region is the region. I'm, I'm talking as a counselor of the citizens of the town of Lincoln, and I would like to see ourselves as a town come in and at least, you know, rate, the standard rate of inflation, just, just out of respect for the taxpayers' dollar. And I don't know if, if everyone's getting that raise equal to just about 6%. And I would ask, if, if we're trying, perhaps we try harder and, and take a closer look at, at the numbers where we can possibly trim, trim this budget. That's all I got to say right now.
Yeah. And just before I go to the mayor, and, and Counselor McLough, but part of that, part of that, and I don't want to say balancing act, but I understand what you're saying with the cost of inflation, you know, at, at 2.7%. And if we're looking at 4.7, 2% of that is because the impact of prudums. So we can't let that stuff go until the development's ready to happen. So that's on us to kind of take on right now, so we're prepared, knowing that at some point it will come back around. So, and, and I think maybe what we'll do is, is, I'll go to Mayor Easton, and then I've got a couple of suggestions that, that, you know, you know, you were bringing stuff up around capital. Maybe there's different ways we can do things to, to kind of look at that. But give Mike some, some things to go back and bring back with a number of different scenarios. And I think that's what, you know, ultimately, we're looking for tonight is, is, is that palatable? No. But are there things where we can get to? Maybe there are. So Mayor Easton.
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. And I'm, I don't have a number. I have a number in my head, but I'm not, I'm going to leave that to the chair. This is his, his show. And however, I want to make the point that we cannot arbitrarily decide on a number because it is, because we don't want to upset people. We have to run this town independent of the region. And the region's number is high, and who knows where it will go. We'll be having that meeting tomorrow night, and I'm sure there's going to be a lot of opinions about why it looks the way it does. But I've seen budgets in this town look like a yo-yo. And when you look at the high, the means, and the lows on those over the last 10 years, what you end up with is a very unsustainable situation. So my caution is that we have an obligation to manage our asset management plan. We also have a, a situation with our community where they are looking at a mission vision and values and a level of service expectation. And we also have growth rates. We have expenditures and we have revenues. And I think you've done quite a good job of explaining that. But I think if we get it into our heads, that we really want this artificially low number because somehow, that's going to be the happy number. I think we are just going to see ourselves go deeper and deeper into the abyss. So if you just, if you want to look quickly at what happened at the region with the zero-based budget, that was the death spiral right there. So now we're starting, we're, we're really into paying for that now. And the biggest increase is with the police services budget. So we need to pay attention to some of the patterns of the past and the obligations that we have. And I know that there are issues of sustainability that need to be evaluated here, and I think we've attempted to do that. And so I'm personally holding firm to the structure around fiscal sustainability because I think that I want to see that hammered, Mr. Chairman, a little bit closer to the bone, because I don't want to see us just giving up because it's, it's a tough year. And I don't think that we'll do that. These are all good questions, and that's my two cents for the moment. Thank you very much.
Okay. Everyone's got their heads down. Everyone's deep in thought. And again, you know what, going on, going on that, what, you know, what the mayor said, and, I mean, is there a magical number? I really don't think there is. It's, it's what we need to make our town go. It's what we need to do to deliver the service. And you know what? Unfortunately, and, and, and all of, well, I mean, the existing counselors that have been around the table, I mean, we've all been caught by that, what's that magic number? Right? And we've done ourselves, and I'm, I'll wear it. We've done ourselves a disservice because we want to be at a magical number. Well, unfortunately, this is what happens. And it's not as bad as what the region's experiencing. You know what? And I've got a chart here. You know, West Lincoln, 2015, seven and a half. Last year, 7.6. 2017, six. Niagara Lake, 13 in 2015, 4.7, 9.97. There's always rationale behind the number. And, and maybe it's a fact where, you know, can we look at, at a capital input and maybe foregoing it for a year and then taking that number that we would have put in a reserve to stretch it? But at some point, it's still going to come back around. So, I mean, you're kind of damned if you do, and you're damned if you don't. So, and, and like Counselor McPherson said, you know, the fives and $10,000, you got to do a heck of a lot of those to, to make an impact. So you know what? At this point, I'd be interested to see those breakdowns that we requested tonight. If anyone comes up with anything, well, you know, because this is our first look at this. Go home, have a read through it. You might come up with other things. Send an email to, to Mike or Angela and, you know, that we can come back at, at the next meeting with those things. And you know what? Seriously, I know there was a bit of that green paper frenzy there at the end of the capital budget, where we put in three or four items. Maybe we need a hard look at that. You know what? It's, it's, comes down to wants versus needs. So I say to everyone, go home, pour yourself a drink of some sort, and go through the budget. And realistically, look at it and say, okay, what can we do? What can we do to, to make a change if we need to make a change? Or if not, then we need to, we need to put our flag in the ground and say, this is what it is, based on growth, based on the growing needs of the community, based on bringing those full-time people on. And, and, you know, we, we kind of skirted the issue before it, you know, doing a quarter of, of a year, and it's, it's not really realistic when it comes to delivering a service. So, and unfortunately, I mean, it's always revisionist history to be able to go back when, you know what, the region was having those 0% budgets. We should have really hit it harder, but we didn't. So, Mayor Easton.
So, Mr. Chairman, now you're compelling me, and I will state a number, because I want the staff to go away and have work to do, because I think it's not fair to leave them hanging. So I'm going to put that number at 1.5, because I think that I'd like to see what 1.5 looks like. And then, in the meantime, we can start getting our thinking caps on if we think that there's something else in there. And, and it'll give us a solid place to start. It's not outrageous, but it's, it's something to put on the table. And I'd like to hear what the, Mr. Krikopoulos has to say about that.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to the mayor. So 1.5% decrease from where we're currently at, or coming in at 1.5?
No, no.
Okay. I, I almost had a heart attack because you're CAO. I mean... That's a decrease of about 25% on our piece to try to get you there. But, so 1.5...
I'm talking about 1.5, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Yeah. Because I mean, if, if it was a number we were looking for, I, you know, after you say that, I was going to throw out 7.9, right? So it's in that 1.5. So, Counselor McPherson.
My number's bigger. So, and I think it comes down to what, what would you identify us not doing as a result of a cut? And then we can make a decision. So my number's 2.5. So, so look at, and I'm not suggesting that we go down 2.5, but look at what would we have to trim out of, out of the capital or out of the operation budget to come to that number? And then we've got something to work with.
So through you, Mr. Chairman, again, just to get some clarification, I think when we do come back with scenarios, what I heard, I think, from Mayor Easton is a decrease of 1.5 from where we're currently at, and from Counselor McPherson, a decrease of 2.5 from where we're at.
Counselor Timbers.
Thank you, Chair Pachariva. I've just been listening to all the comments, and I, I like where Counselor McPherson, his last comment, so you just said there, because I'm, I'm all about bringing it down as well, 2%, 1.5, 2%. I think that's what I'd like to see. But I think when I, when I look at this, I've, I've gone over it a lot of times. I need to know, what does that look like? What are we cutting? What are we not going to do? What, how is it going to impact us? Because that, I can't get my head around. I need to know in detail what that looks like. And that's kind of where I'm sitting. So if we could have a scenario, that would, that would really help a lot. Thank you.
Oh, through you, Mr. Chairman. Absolutely, Counselor. I mean, I think those are good comments, and we'll come back with, I think, examples of what, you know, 1.5 to 2.5 so far is what I'm hearing, down from where we're currently at.
Go ahead, Your Worship.
I was talking about, I just realized now, we're talking operating, but...
Capital's there.
Oh, no, the capital is there.
Yeah, it's there.
The capital's there. That's fine. Thank you very much.
Okay. Counselor McLough.
I'm going to be the dark horse here, and I'm going to, I'm going to ask for an even greater, a greater effort, like, to try to bring it down to 2.2. Sure, I'll be afraid to walk down the hallways come tomorrow, but I'd like, between capital as well as operational, I mean, what, define a need and define a want. Like, how, you know, how bad do we need this, or how urgent do we need that? How do we want to be the, the first local area municipality to, you know, to spearhead this? I mean, is that all, is that asking a lot of a small town? Like, that's, that's, that's my, that's what I'd like to see.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, again, just to get clarification, 2.2 overall, which is a decrease of 7.5% from where we're currently at. Correct, Counselor? No, I just want to make sure that when we come back with those scenarios, that's what we're dealing. That's what you mean by 2.2?
Yeah, to the overall blended, as opposed to...
To our portion, you mean. I can't, I don't, I don't know how I'm able to impact the budget.
No, no, sorry. No, no. Yeah. Well, that'd be impossible, but, you know, sorry. Thank
Yeah. Okay. So we've got your work cut out for you. So we've got, you know, looking at a reduction between 1.5 on the low end and 2.5 on the high end. So there's some scenarios, you know, coming forward that we'll take a look at and, and we'll evaluate. So thank you very much, everyone, for your input. Staff, thank you very much for yours. Now becomes the hard work for our next meeting. So... You can.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a point of clarification. So I heard a couple of numbers being thrown out, and this is just clarification for the minutes, if I can just ask counselors to bear with me here. So is it 1.5 to 2.5 to 7.5 to scenarios that the CAO is looking at? I just want to be very, very clear.
Okay. Counselor McLough.
Well, just speaking, speaking with Counselor McPherson, yeah, I'd like to see that 7, 7 and change from bringing it down to the 2.2 or 2.5 number on the towns' portion.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. We will come back with a few scenarios.
Okay.
With that range being anywhere from 1.5 to 7.5.
Yeah. And if there's service cuts, then put the service, you know, so everyone knows what it is. So seeing...
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I mean, if I could ask, so if that's the case, if we're looking at 7.5 and you highlighted service cuts, possibly some direction, are you going to leave it to the discretion of the senior management team to come back with what potential service cuts would get you to that level? So again, I want to make sure council has what, what it needs to have. There are things we're going to look at. I heard this evening, reserve contributions and, and other particular items, but you just highlighted service cuts potentially. Are there particular areas that council would like us to explore?
Well, it's, it's, it's not my number. So I, I mean, I, I don't know how you're going to get there with, without looking at that. So I, I mean, that would be up to Counselor McLough, what he wants you to look at.
So through you, Mr. Chairman, maybe to help out, Counselor McLough, why don't we look at possible, I mean, I'd like to hear from the council if he's got anything specific in terms of service cuts, but we can look at a whole array of potential cuts and, and what would be required to get you down 7%?
Because, Counselor McLough.
Not, not just service cuts, like, capital, capital project cuts, capital expenditure cuts. And I would look at each department. I would look at certain departments more so than others.
So through you, Mr. Chairman, the only challenge, I think, on the capital side is the actual levy impact for capital, and that's not to say that there aren't abilities to address reserve contributions and so forth. So I, so I will take that, that away, because I think I understand what you're saying. But the actual levy impact from a capital perspective is only a $51,000 increase. Now, there, there could be some zigging and zagging strategically to look at, you know, do you defer a project potentially? And that may address a smaller reserve to capital, or a smaller reserve, a smaller contribution to, to reserve. So I think we can look at a couple of different scenarios. 7, 7% though, has me trying to find probably about a million dollars right now. So I, I just want Council to understand that some of that can happen through reserve contributions, some of it, you know, may look different. But we can definitely put our heads there and, and see what that looks like, for sure.
Thank you. Mayor Easton.
Mr. Chairman, I'm very concerned about us fooling around with the reserve contributions. And I say fooling around because I think these are, I'm, I am serious when I talk about sustainability, and I believe that there are a number of municipalities that are not going to be sustainable if they continue, and if we continue to ignore the infrastructure gap that we have and the money that we require to do that. We do not have, we have a huge amount of work. This is a $1.2 billion asset business that we're running here. We have a huge expectation from the public around service delivery. And I think that the 2.5 number, I think, is a very respectful number to go after. There's no reason why we shouldn't push at that level. I think that, that Counselor McPherson, I don't have any difficulty with that number at all. I don't, I think that we should all be able to put whatever we want on the table. We have to be realistic about what that means in terms of what we can actually get out of the budget. We are not drubbing this budget, and we're not scraping through this budget because we know that there's all kinds of surplus either. I, I would like to see what 2.5% looks like, and then if we need to go back, then we can do that. We'll have a good discussion on that. If we still need to look at something in respect of Counselor McLook, I believe this Council will do that. I don't think for one moment that if we see something in there that we can live without for another year, that we will, that we will just ignore the fact that we should be tidying up this budget. But I want to make it very clear that not for one moment do I think that we need to be scraping out this budget. It just, that's not the business we're in, and it's not the level of service that we're at in this community. So I'll be happy to see, I'll be happy to see what your recommendations are at 2.5.
Thank you, Julie. Counselor Russell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just for my own clarification, and I don't have a calculator here on me. So 2.5% reduction would be approximately $350,000 from operating, is that what we're looking at? From, on the tax levy?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, approximately that, 100, so it's probably closer to 375, but more or less, yes, Counselor.
Okay, so I need a motion to receive and file the operating budget review presented to committee of the whole budget on February 13, 2009. Counselor McPherson, all in favor? And that's carried. We don't have any confidential items tonight. Any, any further staff remarks? Anyone? Any committee remarks? I was just gonna say, I, I mean, this is totally gonna throw everything off, but, but, I mean, this is just me. I'm gonna throw it out, because I'm the Chair. I mean, this special infrastructure levy, knowing where we are, knowing that we didn't do it before, knowing that there's communities that are doing a wastewater infrastructure levy, I'd like to see that 2% and those green sheet items that we added in a flurry to the end of capital budget removed. So I see there's no further business. We're adjourned.